Welcome to the Luna Holistic Podcast. I'm your host Geneva Robbins and every month on this podcast, we'll talk about Reiki as well as answering your questions on all things spiritual. We are gratefully located in Calgary in Treaty 7 Territory. Thank you all and welcome to the show. Hey, welcome back. This is part two of the special sessions. So last time Kim Star and I were talking up the storm about all of these special sessions and we ran overtime massively. So this is part two. So we're going to continue talking about these epic sessions that are two and a half hours that combine a guided meditation of sorts and where you can connect into really like the big questions of life and get help with Reiki and basically just create space so you can shine and sparkle in the world. So yeah, what's next? What's the next one we should talk about, Kim?
Oh, so we have the meet your spirit guides.
Yes, meet your team. Oh, I love that one. It's so fun. It's so neat. So probably people who are listening, they've, they've already had meditations where you meet your team. And I always found those so hard because I'd go there and I'd sit, you know, I'd go into the little meadow and I'd sit on the chair on the bench and apparently my guide would come and sit next to me and I would be sitting there all by myself. Like, where are you? And so after doing lots of work and lots of Reiki and connecting over a very, very long period of time, my guide started showing up and I started meeting them and seeing who they were and getting their names and their information and, and creating a dialogue and a connection with these spiritual beings that work with me. And I love, they love me, they help me, they guide me. And I've got quite a diverse spiritual team, but I feel like it's just anybody who you connect with that you know absolutely loves you, cares for you and is protecting you from the other side, you can connect to those beings and have conversations with them. And, and that I find is so wonderful. And what I think is very fascinating is that Reiki helps you create that bridge so that you can facilitate those conversations. And it was through learning Reiki that I was able to get and maintain that sort of strong connection with my team and be able to ask them questions on sort of a moment to moment basis. And then feel like I could hear or sort of transcribe these sort of fairly reliable answers. And so in the session, what we do is we bring in Reiki so that you're kind of sitting in this bubble of light so that only the highest, purest, nicest beings can talk to us. And so it's all very protected and safe and guided. Got a strong intention at the center that we're only working with the best and brightest. And then we guide you into a space where you can start connecting with, you know, your guides, your guardian angels, the spiritual team and mentors. And in that space, we can prompt you to ask questions. So we can go in with specific questions about things that you have happening in your life. And in some ways, it's like an intuitive reading that you get guided to do yourself, which I, I'm very, very fascinated in doing that kind of work with people. And it helps, but is cool is that I feel like you'll definitely get connected in the session to even just the feeling or presence of people, but even people who don't meditate, I find they're able to make these kinds of connections with the setting of Reiki and the guided, you know, facilitated meditation slash regression we do. And then also sort of we're going in with you so we can kind of see where you're going and see who's there. And based on our own sort of connection and knowing, we can sometimes help you identify, oh, that's probably Archangel Michael, or that's probably Buddha, you know, or Wanyan, or Ganesh, or whoever it is that shows up and works with you. Usually it's whoever you pray to shows up. So prayers are real and these beings are real and they will be there. They're there. And we can connect with them and, and ask them questions and then receive that sort of loving guidance and support directly from the source. And it's beautiful, like talking to the most loving, compassionate, supportive, beautiful energy you could possibly imagine. Sometimes it's there are people who are, you know, your past loved ones will show up because they're part of your team. You know, people that you really trust, love and admire, and you feel totally safe with. They can show up and be there as well. And then we just sort of like integrate it all and, and you can go on your merry way. And what's neat is that we, once you've got that connection, it goes with you. And so we've got a meet your team meditation. So you can listen back. You know, once you've kind of connected, it's a lot easier to then go into those meditations and get that connection again, because it's like, once you've been in that vibration, it's a lot easier to get back into it. But if you've never been there before, if you've never had what feels like a genuine experience of connection, you might feel like your conscious mind is so engaged, it's hard to pick up on the messages, you know, that you're getting because your, your mind might be like pushing out actual valid information. You're working so hard to make that connection. It's actually, you end up blocking it because you have to be in this like very deep space of listening and receiving. And Reiki is naturally yin, it's naturally receiving, it's naturally in that gentle space. So you just harmonize with it and it kind of almost like perks up your ears so you can keep see, hear, receive, know the images and the information and the messages that are coming through. And it's like you get help with that the whole way through. So yeah, it's cool. How does that fit with you, Kim?
Yeah, there's definitely something magical about Reiki and just really creating that bridge. And it's interesting too, because even in a lot of my sessions, it will just kind of happen that I start guiding them into something similar where, where someone, someone is present. And, and it's so interesting. So one of their like guides or one of their team, but it's so, it's so interesting because a lot of people will say, that's never happened to me before. I've never been able to visually see something like that. And so it is the setting of Reiki that really helps you get into that space. And just like you said, it's deep, deep, deep listening. And I mean, for me, for my, like with my guides, and one of the reasons why I would recommend for anybody to do this is once you are aware of and establish that relationship with your guides or your team, it's like having support anytime you need it. For my team, it really does feel like that. It's like I'm able to ask questions. I'm able to feel guided. I'm able to feel supported throughout my day. I'm able to bring those guides in when I'm facilitating a Reiki session. And it's just, it's pretty magical. So yeah, I love it.
Yeah, yeah. And just a regular Reiki session, we can, if people want to increase their intuition, we just set that as your intention. And, and sometimes that can help you really harmonize and connect to that sort of flow and, and it can really kind of support that, opening up that channel, which is really, really beautiful. Yeah. And then we have kind of connected to that, the meet your team session. We have a meet your loved one session, which is quite similar in, in that you're kind of going into this sort of landscape of the soul and meeting somebody who you're already connected with. So somebody who's passed over and you love them and they love you and you want to ask them questions and just connect and hang out, you know? So we can help you get to that place. Sometimes I find when people we love have passed over, they are with us. And I love this idea that every time you think of them, they're there with you. You're thinking of them because they thought of you first. And I love that. It's, it's really, really sweet. One of the things that can be difficult is that we can feel tremendous grief and pain when we think of a past loved one, which is because we love them, you know? And that sometimes the level of the grief is just the indicator of the level of the love. But when we are in that level of pain, it's hard to connect to the messages of love and connection they're sending us. The more traumatic their exit is, they're very involved in helping us heal and helping us know that life continues, their consciousness continues. And you can have real conversations with people who have departed. And it's really, really beautiful and sweet. And again, we do that all within sort of this Reiki bubble. So we'll do a little bit of Reiki beforehand, just to help, you know, clear everything, open up the channel. Just make sure that you're picking up on the same frequency that they're sending on and guide you to a space where you can ask them questions and listen to their answers. And you can ask them about anything and everything, where they are, how they're feeling, you know, guidance for you, details about what you should do on your next step in your journey. They will provide all of that information and more. And what's nice is that I find these sessions be quite amazing because they are working just as hard to connect with us as we are with them. And so there's a high degree of participation when we're connecting with people because we're meeting them on a soul plane, like even if they were a little bit a harder person to talk to in life. Sometimes we're meeting on a soul to soul level. So it's just the best aspects of them. And they also have that sort of divine eye view. So they have got a greater context of why they were the way they were and the healing work they're doing now and what they're learning. And sometimes past loved ones will apologize to us and we can forgive and make amends and, you know, let that deep healing happen in a way that maybe couldn't happen when they were alive because of the pain they were in or the pain that we were in. And that sort of soul to soul connection and conversation is, I find, just so freeing and beautiful. And it helps you connect on that love frequency. Like that's one line in the meditation is that, you know, love is the bridge. We're connecting on this frequency of love. That's the channel we're tuning into. That's the main message. Similar to the ancestral meditation, the multi-generational healing meditation, you can let go of anything you might've been holding. And they'll take whatever parts of it they need and then the rest can just get dissolved into the light. And it's really, really beautiful and is something that I am so excited to be able to do and facilitate for other people. Like almost makes me want to cry uncontrollable tears of joy and gratitude because how this all happened, that I am able to connect so strongly to all kinds of beings is that I had some people I really loved die, you know? In particular, one of my aunts died very suddenly. She was like a second mom to me. And I couldn't believe this beautiful, bright, dynamic, loving person could just blip out of existence. Like, where'd you go? And why aren't you here? You know? And I so trusted her that I knew if I talked to her, she would only give me accurate information. She was so honest and forthright in life. I knew I could, I was totally safe in her hands. And so I just started writing in my journals. I would write out lines of dialogue and I would just ask, hey, how are you? What's happening for you? And I would just write back what I would hear. And that was so beautiful and so powerful. Yeah, it was, it was so, I don't know, it just like expanded my heart and it helped me trust the messages that I was, was getting. And for me, like if I can help somebody connect to somebody they deeply care for, love and trust in that same way, that's like my mission in life is to help people know that they're not alone and that, you know, somehow, somewhere consciousness continues, that we go into this quantum space and quantum realm. And I feel like that's why Reiki is so great. It's a frequency that's quantum by nature. And when we connect in that energy, then we can sort of create this bridge or this connection so that beings of pure love and light can talk to us and we can talk to them. And it's so deeply healing and I find it so helps you, you know, figure out, get your life on track. That's what it did for me. I was like, okay, life is temporary. Got that. And we don't know when it's going to end. Got that. So now what am I supposed to be doing with the time I am here? And feeling at that point in time, this huge calling inside of me to help people with Reiki, with healing, with meditation, with connecting to their spiritual essence and core and living from their purpose, figuring out what their purpose is and making choices based on that feeling. That's entirely what drew me into this work. And by being able to connect with my aunt and that way it made me like, I felt like I could, I could get freedom and permission to go for my dreams. And so if that's what I can help unlock for other people, that's big. The biggest. Yeah, just that. That one's a big one for me.
Yeah, it's so beautiful. And yeah, the one thing I love, we were talking about earlier was that another beautiful thing about it is that you're creating this experience with someone else that they can take with them. So that they're able to go back to that space and connect. I love that so much. It's almost like they're doing the channeling. Like we're showing them and facilitating it so that they can take that home with them and then continue that journey for themselves.
Yeah, it's big. It's massive. And it's so nice to know that they're okay, you're okay. And that they're helping you and guiding you and that, you know, you just, all you need to do is ask. And once that connection's made, it stays and it grows. And, you know, the first couple of times, maybe you need a little bit of help connecting. That's okay. But then it helps you sort of generate that trust so that you can keep on connecting and flowing. And we've got lots of like help and resources of kind of how to, you know, write little dialogues. You know, you just like journal with them. And it's almost like you're, you ask a question and then you just write down the response. And so, and you just trust whatever you're getting. And in some ways, it's a lot like learning a language, I find, getting these messages is like, because they're communicating on the frequency of energy. And then we have to translate that into words and pictures that have meaning for us. And so the first couple of times you connected, it might feel like just a big pulse of energy. It might just feel like sitting in love or feeling like it's a hug, but on the inside. And as you keep on connecting, it's like every time you connect, it's like you're adding another word in your vocabulary, your spirit vocabulary. And then you can start having full conversations with, with these people. And it's so amazing. It's so, so amazing.
It really is. And like I remember a really long time ago, you, you and I did a session and we connected with my grandma. And one of the things that ended up happening was that basically you told me like, here's how you can talk to her. And I remember doing that and feeling like this is really her. I could sense her in a different way than, than what I had previously after she passed away. Like I would, I would think about her and I would have visions about her. And sometimes I would like maybe even hear little things that she would say to me, but this was different. It was like, I really felt like I crossed that bridge and we were together. I don't think there's anything that's more special than that and, and being able to have that experience. So, so I, I highly, highly recommend this session for anybody who's looking for that connection.
Yeah, I love it. It's my favorite thing to do with people. We've got a couple of others. So there's a creative manifesting one. So you basically get guided to go into a creative, your creative workshop and whatever you want to bring into your life. You basically go into like a version of a spiritual laboratory where you get to, you know, preview the movie, connect with your team and ask your team like what they're experiencing, what their thoughts are on it. And if it's a go and you want to create this thing and have this experience, then you put it into the light and put it into the portal. And this is a meditation that I've got recorded on the Luna Holistic website. And it's basically the guided version of that is the session. So we can do some Reiki and there's some special tools with skills with Reiki where you can use Reiki to manifest goals. And, and so we can do that. We've got a crystal grid in the center and we're very happy to put your intention in the middle of this crystal grid because, you know, things become real. That there's a Luna Holistic at all is because it was in the center of my crystal grid in Reiki manifestation and then it manifested. So it happens on the universe's time scale, not ours, unfortunately. Sometimes it takes a little bit, but the time it takes is always the necessary time for things to manifest for your greatest good. And also because we're doing it within the context of Reiki, you're only going to create things that are going to be a net benefit for you and everyone. So I find this is really important for people who have sort of a helping, healing mindset, who really care about the earth and its inhabitants. These are co-created dreams. You want the world to be a nicer place. So does everyone else. You want to help people. People want your help. And so it's a really beautiful way of supercharging that connection because if you help people, then, you know, you are the answer to somebody's prayer. You know, somebody is asking for you to be part of their life. And so when both sides are wanting this connection and it creates a positive benefit for you, the other people involved and a ripple of positivity in the world, I find those things just like, there's an energy behind them that really gets everything going. And because I am a teacher and coach by, by nature, it's like, we also spend time at the end of that session to not just like imagine it, but get you like concrete little baby steps of like, okay, well, what's the first step? What's the next step? And to really put feet under your dreams because it's not enough to just dream the dream. You have to show up for your dream. You have to put physical work and energy into it. But making sure that you are in alignment with where sources pushing you really helps things manifest quicker because then you know your action steps are pointed in the right direction and that you're going downstream, as Abraham says, instead of upstream, that you, you get into that frequency feeling of what you want and then you take guided action. And if you keep doing that, then it leads you to new places, new experiences. It might not always be what you've written down on paper, but I can guarantee you it's going to be better because the universe has thought of details that make it more joyful, more beautiful, more nuanced and abundant in every sense of that word. So, you know, I think abundance is everything we're grateful for. And so it's not just the financial or the physical experiences. It's also all of those little moments of joy, those like synchronicity moments, those moments where we know we're, we're safe, we're guided, we're protected, that there's an energy that is looking out for us. There's, that, you know, we can create memories, these magical little memory moments with the people we love the most. And we can meet people that we, new people that are friends and connections and, and learn and grow. All of those experiences get enriched when we are in this frequency. And so part of it is helping you hone in on what is that magic frequency, that feeling of being in alignment. And then when you make choices from that alignment feeling, then it starts leading you to new experiences. And so it's a pretty powerful little like combo of all of these things. It's quite fun. And I'd say works. Yeah. What do you think about that, Kim?
Yeah, this one's so cool. It was interesting too, because I remember we kind of sat down and we talked about a vision. And then once I was in the, like the meditation and you were guiding me through that and I was answering the questions, my vision grew. Like it just got bigger and bigger. So I started off just having the conversation with you and talking about some of the things that I was dreaming of and the things that I really wanted to bring into my life. And then it was so cool as we started the meditation, it would just, and, and we were looking in on that vision. It just got bigger and bigger and bigger. And I had felt like during the session, like I made just so much space for so much more to come in. So yeah, it was, I love this one. And I, this is, this is definitely one of my favorites for sure. I think it's so magical. So yeah.
I love it. It's so good. We also have a pattern meditation or a pattern healing session. And this, this one is all about helping you shift the energy of patterns or habits that you have in your home environment and in your day, from maybe habits that aren't so nurturing and supportive to ones that are more nurturing and supportive. It's not, definitely not a replacement for addictions, counseling and therapy, not at all. But if you have numbing patterns that you want to clear or you want to create healthy, it's more space for healthier patterns in your life. Maybe you want to start an exercise routine or maybe you want to drink more water. Or maybe it's making more space for fun and joy and creativity in your life, in your day, in your home, then this is for you. And basically it's, in some ways, we're doing Reiki on, on you, but also Reiki on your space. So we do this sort of in our mind's eye. We can, in some ways, clear out any sort of stagnant energy in your home and bring in this energy of positivity. And I find this is really great if you are returning home after a big experience, like you're traveling or you've gone on a retreat or you, or even just in a phase of like changing your life and changing, you know, you know, changing out of old patterns that are stuck into new patterns. And you, if you have a feeling like there's just a bit of sluggish energy that's like, can pull you back into that old pattern. This pattern healing meditation journey session is all about sort of getting an energetic hold on the, the energies in your space, in your day, in your calendar. We can clear your calendar, you know, and create spaces or sort of feel into, you know, the, the time part of where are you gonna fit more loving, caring actions into your, into your days? We can, we can tune in on the, the space and the time components of, of these, because that's two parts of, of the pattern. And it's a guided visualization meditation that we do together in the center. We don't go to your home. That's, other people can do space clearing. I used to do space clearing, but I'm called more to teach. So, but I can give you, I can teach you instructions of what your home might need or where you can incorporate these new energies into your life. And then really give yourself a little anchor or reminder of your practice of where you want the energy to flow. Sometimes we can do things in just little tiny symbolic ways, like putting a picture up in a particular corner of your house that reminds you that you want to get outside more, you know? So you just put a picture of the mountains near where your boots are. So you just put on your boots, even if it is cold and you judge outside. And then you go and look at the mountains and then you come home and you're like, ah, pattern shifted. So there's something that I've been doing quite a bit. It's something that we incorporated in, as part of our retreat that we had in 2023. We are looking at potentially doing retreats in the mountains again in 2025. And this year, 2024, maybe doing a staycation retreat. Stay tuned on that one. Well, if you, if you sign up for our newsletter, you will be the first to know when we are going to have these new offerings or if we make any new little special sessions or any of the other goodies and doodads. You'll be the first, you'll get it delivered to your inbox. All of the fun things like these kinds of meditations and basically little messages that you're amazing. You should keep on going and do the thing. That's what we, that's what we send you. So you can do that. Yeah. How does that sit with you? The pattern healing session?
Oh, Reiki is so cool. Like that's the only one I haven't done. And I'm like, oh, I need that. I'm just like, sitting here like you're talking straight to my soul right now. This is like a theme, a real theme that, that people, a lot of people come in and they, they say, you know what? I'm, I don't know what it is, but I just can't seem to, like I keep saying, I'm gonna do this tomorrow and then I don't do it. I keep saying, I'm gonna switch this or I'm gonna change this around and then I don't do it. So I did experience the meditation at the retreat and that meditation, the pattern meditation was wonderful. But yeah, I think this session, just from what you've expressed, I think this session would be very, very helpful and powerful for a lot of people. So I'll be your first booking.
That sounds good. And it's so perfect too, because you're going away for a little bit. So.
I know you were, you really were speaking to my soul. I'm turning, I'm turning 40. So like big life event, going on holidays. But yeah, it's just, it's just definitely, I think it's, I think a lot of people have these patterns that are really difficult to shift. So what a beautiful way to be able to, to clear that up for, for yourself.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's so lovely. I, I love all of that. But yeah, it's, I, I find it's, it can be the thing that just makes, helps you make little tiny shifts that end up creating big ripples. And sometimes when we're stuck in old patterns, it's like, they're just well-worn grooves, right? And it's really hard to, because it's just autopilot, our brain, especially when we're tired, our brains just want to conserve energy. And so we'll just keep doing things, you know, the way we've always done them because it, it conserves energy. And, and so this sort of helps create a new resonance that draws you almost like a magnet into the new pattern instead of into the old pattern. And, and so even just like a little, sometimes it's the tiniest little disruption of the track, the well-worn groove in your day, in your home. It just sort of creates a little bit of turbulence. So you're like, oh, maybe I'm gonna do this new thing instead of the old thing. And, and then so, and then it's just getting curious and tinkering with it, almost like it's like an art project in our life. It's a sculpt, a living 3D energy sculpture that, that we're creating on the fly and adjusting as we need to. Sometimes the patterns, you know, all patterns serve us in some way. That's why they're, they're, they're there. But when we grow and change, sometimes those patterns don't match us anymore because we've shifted. And so this helps us sort of create those shifts that maybe have gone from internal to external. And so then we kind of match our lives. And so then we don't feel like, oh, every time I go back into work now, I don't feel like I fit there anymore. But I actually don't want to leave that job because I, I like it and I like the people. I just don't want the ugh feeling. So sometimes it's just tiny little things that can shift things. Like maybe you can just bring in a nice big crystal and put it on your desk and, and, or, you know, a little like kinetic sculpture or a little, you know, waterfall or water feature that you can bring into your space that's gonna remind you of something significant. And it's just gonna create a little bit, or a plant. I love house plants. House plants are living beings that shift energy in your home. You can just, you can buy them at the supermarket. It's so great. And it just instantly will brighten the energy in your space. So all those kinds of things can, you know, but it's gonna be different for every person. Every person is gonna need something different. Some people need fewer plants, not more plants. They'll maybe need some clear space or just some empty, some empty space so new things can come in, you know? Yeah. So, yeah, I love all of that. That's so great. You had some questions for me. Did you wanna?
What inspired you to create these sessions, Geneva?
Oh, I think the biggest thing with all of them is that this is work that I've been doing for so long. I realized so many people didn't realize they did that. We did that here, or that's what Reiki could do. So, you know, Reiki helps with past life healing. It helps with multi-generation healing. Like just a regular session helps with shifting patterns and manifesting. Like these are all things that Reiki does. The only thing that you need to shift is your intention and that's what will create the change and the healing. But I also recognize that when people are doing really big work, they need more time. So if people are getting into like the nitty gritty of their multi-generational healing and they've got a lot of trauma in their ancestry, it's like they're gonna need a little bit more than their regular session. And so I wanted to create these longer sessions so then we can really get into it, but also not just get into it, but have it resolved to get to a clear, healed, connected space where people can feel really well-grounded after the session. They can feel really supported, really held in that loved energy, that Reiki energy. And so that they could get that big, that big resolution that, that they need, that feeling of peace and comfort and continuity and, and all of that good, good energy, you know? So I, I don't want people just to dip their toe in it and then go home and they're like, what the heck was that? And still feel like they're a wreck. I want to make sure that, that, that if we're gonna go into the mud puddle, we're going in at full steam and we're gonna get you out the other side. And, and cleared off and then realized, well, maybe it wasn't a mud puddle after all. Maybe it was an opportunity for healing and growth and transformation. And it's all so different on the other side. And putting things in context and having connection and compassion at the end of it. That's what all of them do. It's all different pathways to get you in some ways to the same place, which is in a greater connection with your spiritual essence and having more of that light present in your life so that you're more yourself. More of you can show up in more places in your life. And then you can do the work you're really meant to do in the world and shine in that bright, beautiful way, like only you can. That's really why I do this work. I want people to be in that radiance and that space where they can just show up and breathe and be and make and create and say and do all the things they need to make, create and say and do. Because I feel like that's where we start transforming, you know, the old systems that aren't working for anybody. That's how we start healing on a massive global scale is for everybody to be lit up and doing their best work in the world, whatever that happens to be, you know? So maybe you're an engineer at heart and you need to engineer solutions to massive mighty problems. When you clear out some of this old stuff that's keeping you small and hidden, you're more likely to speak up in meetings and get your ideas forward and get things made and created in a really tangible, real world way. And I'm really interested in making sure people get there. So that's why.
Amazing. And I think, I think they truly are really special sessions. So thank you for, thank you for bringing them into this world.
Aw, thank you, Kim. If you have any questions about any of this stuff, please let us know. Thank you, Kim, for joining me for part two.
I'm happy to be here, Geneva. Thanks for having me.
Awesome. Great. Thanks. Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us on the Luna Holistic Podcast. We're so grateful that you are here. If you've got a question, we'd love to hear from you. Go to lunaholistic.com/podcast and we'll answer you in an upcoming episode. Be sure to subscribe to our show on Apple Podcasts or Spotify. And also please rate, because you never know where your little five stars will go to shine light into somebody's heart today. So thank you very much and we'll see you next time.